I want to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting for the Board of Education for Community Unit School District 186. And Mrs. Hines, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Bane?
Here.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Doris absent, Mr. Graves absent. Mrs. James?
Here.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Here.
Mr. Rungy?
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, the next item is the approval of the agenda and Dr. Evers, I understand there's an addition?
Yes, there is one addition. It's the filing of a public office of the Board of Education needs to be added to the closed session.
That it?
That's it.
Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the consent agenda, which consists of District 186 regular board meeting minutes dated December the fifteenth, 2020, Tri-County regular board meeting minutes dated December the ninth, 2020, Tri-County bills for January 2021, applications and reports, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six is the approval of the District 186 bills for January 2020. There are three, so if you have a question of Mrs. Bush, if you would please advise the board which package you're asking from, which page? Is there any questions from the board?
I have, sorry. Um, the packets of one of four, it was unit office blinds.
Which page?
The one of four, the small one.
Yeah, but which, which page?
First one.
Um, they're, they're just for unit office blinds. Our blinds were...
It was on the American Express. I was just, I saw like during the past month or something. I was just wondering, are we doing updating at the unit office or?
Um, all of our, all of our blinds required us to climb on our desks to move them up and down. So, they were just, just not, the, the mechanisms were not working, so we did replace the blinds in the whole unit office. The first one was in my office because Ms. Heinz, because Ms. Hines had to climb on my counters to bring them up and down in the afternoon. So it was just because the, the existing ones were old and not working, so. The whole front office, not any other additional repairs will be done, but the blinds were, were not functioning.
Okay, so it was just those two places, not the whole building?
No, it's just the, it's my, my office, Ms. Chitam's front office area and Ms. Hines', so it would be the whole remainder of the, the front office, just blinds, so that they're, they're all up, working up and down without having to climb.
And then the one of eight, the Burnville Seat House, the Winter Week, is that it? Is that something I have to do every year, Jan? To the field?
I'm looking at that, um, baseball.
Okay, the baseball one, okay.
Obviously not our football field, so our athletic fields, we're, we're seating them in the, in the fall and into the winter, the time to be ready, that time, so yeah. I believe it's something we do annually.
Okay, that's it.
Anyone else? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the bills for January 2021.
So moved.
And a second?
There it is.
Mrs. Hines?
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yeah.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Dr. Door? Mr. Graves absent. Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Item number seven is communications, and I understand we have some?
We do.
The first one is from Rebecca McNeely at Carruthers. Dear Dr. Evers and the Murphy'sboro School Board of Education, in the midst of all the bumps and tumbles that 2020 brought, with it also came some great blessings. I am writing to let you know that our family is exciting, excited and eagerly awaiting the arrival of our sweet baby girl in April of this year. My official due date is April 23rd. However, given the current circumstances of the virus, my doctor has requested that I begin my maternity leave as close to a month beforehand as possible to ensure that I am healthy at the time of delivery. I would like to request to begin my maternity leave on March 29th, 2021 through the end of this school year. Thank you so much for your consideration. Sincerely, Rebecca.
The administration makes that recommendation to approve the leave request.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation?
I'll make the motion.
Second? And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, the next one's from Cynthia Evans. To whom it may concern, I am resigning from my position as a Title I aide at General Johnny Logan effective January the sixth, 2021.
The administration makes the recommendation to approve the resignation.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and that you're on a little bit of a delay.
Okay, sorry.
The next one's from Jessie Barge. Dear Board members, it is with regret I submit this letter of resignation as the head golf coach at Murphy'sboro High School. I have accepted a new challenge beginning with the spring semester of 2021. I will be coaching the men's golf team at SIU. Coaching the Red Devil Golf Team has been a career highlight. I certainly enjoyed the experience. Having three girls advanced to sectionals as individuals in 2017 was one of those highlights. Certainly having Hanika Higgin compete the state championship in 2017, 18 will be a memory I will always cherish. Equally rewarding, it is, it is the increased participation in the golf program over the past two years. In 2020, we had full rosters on both the boys' and the girls' teams. I am grateful for the opportunity you gave me. I have spoken with Mr. Navara and Mr. Ellemeyer. They both know I will continue to help and support the golf program. Sincerely, Jessie Barge.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation, to accept that.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That it?
That's it.
Alright, next item is fishbowl items, and I don't see a fishbowl, so we will move past that. Item number nine is Freedom of Information Act request, and I don't see any on here. Item number 10 is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience. To make public or employee comments, the Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns? Are there any employee concerns? Very good. We'll now move into old business. The first item is the District Financial and COVID Update. This is informational only.
Um, just similar to last week, we entered the new, new COVID numbers for this week, so we have the numbers from January, January 12th to January 19th for COVID positive and quarantine and isolated students and staff. Um, we've now tested, rapid tested 322, 322 employee, or sorry, 322 individuals. Nine positive students, five positive staff, and then three auxiliary coaches or McElvein employees. That wouldn't be our direct employees. Today, 162 of our employees went to the SIU arena and had their first round of the Moderna vaccine done. And as one of the individuals who had it done, it was one of the most efficient processes. I think that most of us are maybe having a little bit of arm pain, but most are doing fairly well. There was one person who had a little bit more than, like, kind of passed out, but he is doing well this afternoon, so life is pretty good for all of us who took round one, so. I think there were a little bit of, when we watched the videos, it looked like a painful, like, injection, and it was really, if you're on the fence, and like, ah, I don't know if that, you could almost not feel it go in. It was really, whether...
I'm seeing him right behind you shaking.
It, it was crazy how little it hurt. I mean, crazy, so.
Most painful shot or...
Mm-hmm, it really was, so. Um, hopefully we will not have many individuals who have adverse effects, but um, from what we hear, round one does not typically have very many symptomatic individuals, or like achy, sore, can't work the next day. Round two is where we did some intentional planning. Thankful very much to Mr. Ellemeyer, who watched the calendar, and when it was go time last Wednesday, on the eighteenth of February, which was the date we wanted to get all 162 employees registered for, feverishly jumped into like, um, data entry, so the unit office, the team, and then Mr. Ellemeyer and Ms. Sunny, uh, they jumped in, did a lot of quick entry. I helped a little bit, a fraction in the entry, maybe messed up a few people's names, sorry about that, a first name and a last name when I was copying and pasting from an Excel sheet, but I got dates of birth, I got phone numbers all right, so everyone will receive what they need, so. It, it was just a really positive process, and they, they were really, really accommodating, and anyone who didn't get on the eighteenth, they said if we send names, there were a few people who were on the twenty-third, we can send names and they'll make sure all of our employees get the eighteenth. We took two days. We took a remote learning day on the eighteenth and a remote planning day on the nineteenth, just in case on round two, people just feel too achy to come the next day or, or under the weather. We figured that would give Friday through the weekend for everyone to feel better. So there won't be students in the building on, for round two, on the eighteenth or nineteenth. That will be remote days, so.
Hopefully, we're about to turn the corner.
Absolutely, so. Jan, do you want to do a brief District Financial Update?
I do, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I will say I had my COVID vaccine today, and I didn't even feel a needle at all, so. I'm, I'm pretty sure they put a band-aid on. I don't even think they gave me anything, but that's not really a financial update, but I just thought, you know, it wasn't even a thing at all today. Um, just a couple things. Uh, we started just some preliminary discussions with West Bus about our transportation contract and hoped to have something, one way or the other, to bring to the Board in February. So, very preliminary at this point, but we are at the end. We've done the three-year contract with West, two-year extension, and then this year has been um, a one-year extension, so now we are year to year with West Bus unless we go out to bid, so. Um, I don't know what a one-year proposal will look like, but I will be bringing something to you, one way or the other, next month. Either this is a recommendation for a one-year extension, or maybe we should go out to bid, so. We're still very early in those discussions, but February will, will be the time, and I will keep you updated on that. And the second thing would be just the federal COVID funding, that, um, discussions about getting that money handed down to all the states and all the school districts, and a number for us, although I don't know what kind of strings are attached, I believe is a multi-year, uh, grant agreement, but the number that has been posted for our district at this point, based on our current enrollment, is 3.4 million dollars. Um, and it fits the same kind of expenses that we've had this year, the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we got this year has gone pretty fast, but that was, you know, all the Chromebooks to be one-to-one devices, um, all the PPE, all the, um,
signage.
Supplies, training, the software for us to, to teach remotely, and a lot of those expenses will happen again. Maybe not the Chromebooks, but I mean, we will, we will be looking at having to update those as well, so.
And lights.
We don't have any specifics on that, just the, the hope and promise that there might be money coming down the pipe.
So we're thinking this is a multi-year?
It, that, to, to essentially provide the emergency relief to get through the pandemic is what it's looking like, so. So it is. It's just under 3.4 million dollars, and it, we're hoping that it will allow for more flexibility for like class size reduction and things like that. On the previous years, on the initial one, it didn't allow for like smaller class sizes, or things like, things such as that to make our classrooms so that they could socially distance. We're very fortunate that many of our classrooms were already very small, so, like, enrollment-wise, student enrollment, teacher-to-staff ratios, but um, it will allow us to, to continue, stay the course on, but some of the items that we purchased, like the signage in the hallways and on the, the walls, won't have to be reincurred, so license, like the Freckle license and different like software and, you know, licensures will be able to be continued, and we'll, we'll be able to look at other, other ways that will be meaningful for curriculum and, and needs for our remote learners and our in-person learners, or the blended learners, because even though today was a great day with the vaccine, we, we, we have not fully turned the corner, and likely we will have students who will be, you know, full remote even next year, so. We just have to be prepared, and we'll use the CARES mon, money to address every student and, and what approach they learn, so. Um, it's, it, that's the tentative number, but yeah, to see a number over 3 million dollars is, is pretty, yeah, pretty staggering, so.
I did have a question sort of along those lines. I saw on, somebody had posted something on Facebook about Murphy'sboro donating Chromebooks to Trinity in Carbondale?
Chromebook cards, like some older, like...
We got rid of some, we got rid of some old Chromebooks as well. They, they were not, uh, not supported by Google anymore, and so the new wave that we got replaced those, and so those old Chromebooks, we gave some to Trinity, Emmanuel Luther and St. Andrews, Trico, Cardinal New School.
So I guess my question really is sort of twofold. One, if, why wouldn't we keep them as a backup in case we had Chromebooks, um, that, you know, stopped working, and so then we'd have a replacement? And then two, I guess, my concern, um, comes to play when we're donating materials to private religious, um, any kind of group that's a religious group rather than, um, another public institu-, you know, I, I can understand donating things to other public schools, but...
Even in the parochial structure, they get a portion, you know, because they reside in a, in a public school district, so. Even like our CARES grant money for like the emergency relief, like, and, and all of our title funds proportionally go to those students, because they aren't, even though they elect to go to a parochial school, they are residents in a district, so a portion of those state grants go to the, to benefit, like, what was the, do you remember what Emmanuel and?
I don't remember how much they ended up getting. I know they were able to buy devices, but they couldn't buy enough to meet the need that they had.
But the ones that you, you donated to the other school systems could not be supported, like, on our network and with our software?
No, not with the software. They would run, but they couldn't run some of the applications that we use.
So...
And I did put a list out. There's a statewide listserv that I'm on, and I, I put notice out there that we may have some of these, and I really didn't have very many takers, and so whenever I contact the local folks, um, that's when the parochial schools are typically the ones who will jump at those opportunities. And so they were stacked up, ready to go.
So it would have been just based on kind of the interest expressed? I know I acquired tables and a lot of like computer furniture from other school districts based on similar listservs, you know, where it was obsolete. I got a lot of stuff from Trico, like fancy tables and things in the years past, because they were too big for their classrooms, when they actually put them together and teachers weren't using them.
And that's typically allowed to, to interchange between state, other state entities.
Right.
You know, that's usually allowed. I'm just not familiar with, um, I guess, the practice of giving things to private, to...
To non-public, yeah.
Especially ones that are in Murphy'sboro.
Right. Well, and if they're functionally obsolete for us, I mean, you, when you're looking at essentially salvage materials, they're either going to collect us for someone or actually find a good functional use, so I think when you look at more like the listserv nature, they allow all, all districts to kind of, eh, be a part of like that sharing of information, and so, um, I guess you prioritize, like, you know, if you would have gotten all responses from local public institutions, but they all accessed a larger piece of money from CARES dollars. I mean, we got the, the lion's share of, of the CARES money, and, and they, you know, the two pro, local parochials only got a portion of it, so. I do, I do understand that question, though.
Any other questions?
I have one other question. As far as the COVID update and some of the other things, are, we no longer using social media at all in our district? I mean, we used to be kind of one of the leaders as far as Facebook and Twitter. We have had district posts for a long time to get information out to the public about things going on in our district. Is there a reason why that's no longer occurring, or something that we can bring back, or?
I, I put information on the district...
Put it on website. They actually have to go there and look for it, and I don't think that's as, um, common as it being pushed out to people.
I'm, I'm not a person who's typically used Facebook as a primary means of communicating. I will say that we haven't had any in-person like parent events or programs or anything that allows for attendance and activities, so. You know, when you're looking at like programs, Christmas programs and events, we just haven't had any this year. I mean, maybe in a traditional year where you would have more, but we, we have universally, I have, I've always used the, the website as my primary means of communication, so.
Well, I saw like Jessica Wine had a program, and so then people were sharing it from personal pages, and I just thought that would have been a wonderful thing that the district promoted. They did it, I mean Troy even helped with it.
Sure.
They, um, it would have been a nice thing for a parent, you know, if I wouldn't have been friends with somebody that shared it, I don't even think a lot of people in the community knew that it was going on, which is why...
It was on the high school Facebook page.
Yeah, it was on the high school, the individual, yeah, the individual high, like the school district pages, but, the school pages, sorry, the high school, but. Um, if there's things that you...
Let us see us going down.
Parents do look to social media as, as a way to get updates.
That's, yeah, I mean, I did have not typically, I mean, in the nine years that I've been, I have not used social media, um, as my primary mechanism. But, I mean, it's something to consider. I mean, we'll just have to make sure that we have the comments filtered and things like that, because, yeah, that is not something that I, I typically would use as my primary means. I try to have everything on, you know, and work with Mr. Parenton on making sure that it's a robust webpage, but not a social media platform based super tendency, so.
Any other questions? Alright, next item is the approval of the 2020, 2021 seniority list, which have been on display for a month, correct?
Yes.
And has there been any comments coming to you?
Yeah, there were a few questions about how we figured it. We had a couple that were part-time. They didn't understand why their seniority wasn't, they thought they had more years, but they forget that part-time doesn't accrue that, and that some change positions, and then they lose their seniority at the position they were in. So once the explorations were made, they were, it was fine, so.
So you handle all those?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the seniority list as presented?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number three is the approval of the Press Policy Update Number 106, and this has been on display as well for a month, correct?
Correct, and so...
Any comments?
Um, I did not, but I mean, when you looked at, most of them were non, non-substantial. There were a few renaming of the, uh, student activity, the student activity and fiduciary funds, um, looking at, um, how boards do committee appointments, additional language on fingerprinting, uh, closing of school on Election Day, um, establishing minimum clock hours during the pandemic requirements for e-learning. ISBE does have the authority to modify graduation requirements as needed. Um, there's a FASFA, um, non-participation language change. Graduation requirements for one or more students, or, or one or more classes for individuals 16 or older, if they want to participate in an entrepreneurship program, or an apprenticeship program, rather, and then, um, a lot of it was related to the, the current, um, public health emergency with Corona and some other fingerprinting and basic like written statements. Most of them were minor substance and not substantive changes, so.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the press update?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving to new business, the first item is a Transitional ED Classroom.
About a month ago, I was contacted by Jan Piercy at, um, Tri-County. She's the director, and they currently have Transitional ED programs for kids, students with emotional disabilities in Decoy and in Anna Jonesboro. And looking at a centralized location for students who are in grades three through five, who have emotional disabilities, but are at that point where they're ready to be transitioned back to either our, our school as the home district, or other ones that might be like Trico, or, or students that are in our, in our little center part of the region. And being very selective, having about eight to 10 students in this program at the most. They have their own teachers, teaching aides. Um, they would be on a similar fee structure where they would pay us for, for occupying the space, and, um, Mr. Todd had several questions, so Mr. Todd and I um, did, uh, Google Meet with Ms. Piercy so that he could, eh, have his questions answered about participation. They would have to earn at least 80% or higher on grades and behavior to be able to participate in some of our, um, uh, rotations, uh, music, PE, art. Uh, and, and so they would, they would be the students who are looking towards transitioning back to home schools, and they would occupy a classroom at, at Carruthers.
But we don't require an 80% for other students to attend those things?
No, well, they just want to, they have like a, a basic criterion so that the kids will be successful when they go out to do, you, they don't want kids who are going to have behaviors that will...
Sure.
Be disturbed. They want, they want to lend them to be successful, so.
But can we say they have to have an 80%, like a, like an 80% in the class as a requirement to attend art, when we don't require that of our regular ed students?
Well, they want their behaviors and their academics to be strong so that they can go out there with a, a pair of professional, be successful. I did, we had just asked like, what's your expectation for, we didn't want a kid to be having recurrent, you know, behaviors and be out in, in gen ed, you know, for, you know, untethered, so, you know, they usually look at their behavior and, and solid academics so that they're, they're ready to, to fly, but they won't even typically be encouraged to be part of that program. They'll be at one of the centers for, you know, this will be kind of that soft space for them to spread their wings. So all the students who are selected to this program will inherently be prepared for that, that next step, to be re-mainstreamed and re-included, so. He has, you know, already looked for a space and has an identified classroom space with outside access, and, um, it seems like to me, as a, a special ed backgrounded person, it seems like, uh, a need that needs to be filled, and that that grade level, third through fifth lends itself, um, to successful re-integration when you look at older students. And even with younger students, that K to two, a lot of times their communication and their, their readiness skills are not necessarily, they're not necessarily prepared to, to socially and emotionally adjust to the academic rigors as well as the social expectations, but third to fifth seems to be a really, really good time to try to, to get kids back into their home schools and in regular ed classes, so. I, I really do support this decision. I think that it will be a really good fit at Carruthers. And just looking at a one-year saying, you know, we would like to, to give this a try, and I think that it will be a long-term fit, like, similar to what our Choices classrooms have at the high school, where they'll just fit in like a seamless part of the, the Murphy'sboro family.
I, I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, year before last, we were looking at Carruthers, and we were told repeatedly by staff and, and community members that there's no additional space in that building, so much so that we're talking about how we build on, or if we build on, or if we get rid of it, because the space just isn't good. It's not conducive, it's not large enough. We already don't have enough room for our programs that we have. So how can we fit yet another classroom in?
I know that the, the, one of the teachers has, that has been spoken to is a co-teacher, and he would move to a smaller classroom, classroom, one of the half-size classrooms that currently is used for just a period or two for music, and then that would free up a, a classroom for this transition room.
So where would music go, then?
Um, they, there's a space off of, uh, the, the choir, the choir and, um, music room right now. Ms. Hanson's room is really large, and there's, there's another office-type space for smaller, um, duo and like, um, trios, you know, quartets.
So they, they would be renting space from us, am I right?
They would, correct.
And we can legally make, put requirements on these students that we do not have on our regular ed students?
They just have, they have expectations for like...
Right, but as a parent, I could say how, why can my regular ed student go to art, and he has a D in math, that my special ed student who has a C in math can't?
And I may have misspoken. I know that it's that behavior has to be at 80, so I don't know if that's when they transition back to like full-time, or where they're at, like for, like the inclusion, but I know their behavior has to be at 80% for participation. It may not be the academic side. I may have misspoken on that side. But I know that they want them to be... But I know that they want them to be good students, prepared like emo, socially and emotionally and, you know, ready to be independent so that they blend in and they don't, don't stand apart, so. So my recommendation would be, the administration would be to, to allow um, this program at Carruthers next year.
Okay, if there's no further questions, then I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mrs. Ivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Mrs. James?
No.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries. Item number two is the approval of resolution abating the taxes heretofore levied for the year twenty twenty to pay debt service on the general obligation school bonds, alternate revenue source, series twenty seventeen, general obligation school bonds, alternative revenue source, series twenty nineteen, and general obligation school bonds, alternative revenue source, series twenty twenty of the district.
Okay, this is me, I guess. Um, so you've been seeing this agenda item since two thousand seventeen, actually. Uh, the board approved the sale of bonds in two thousand seventeen, in nineteen, and then twenty. Uh, the alternate revenue source bonds with the intent that we were going to do these certain construction projects and then repay the, the debt with our county facility sales tax. So this resolution just allows us legally, we're required to, to uh, approve this resolution each year to continue to um, use the county facility taxes to pay for these, these bonds. Otherwise, if we, if we don't pass this resolution, all of this debt goes on the tax rolls and would be the obligation of taxpayers, which I know was never the board's intent when these bonds were passed. So it would be the recommendation of administration to approve the resolution as presented.
Questions from the board? Hearing done, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Ivaldi?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries. Item number three is the approval of resolution transferring fund, funds from the school facility occupation tax fund of community unit, school district one eighty-six, Jackson County, Illinois, to the bond and interest fund of said school district and abating the taxes heretofore levied for the year twenty twenty to pay debt service on the taxable general obligation limited school bonds, series twenty oh nine A of the district.
Now, these are the, this bond, the two thousand nine bond that was sold originally, this general obligation bond was sold and was, was levied each year and paid for by property taxes by Murphysboro taxpayers. Uh, when the county facility sales tax was passed, at that point, that obligation was passed over and paid for with county facility sales tax with a resolution by the board each year. So um, it would be the, the recommendation of administration to continue to do so, to abate the property taxes and pay for the two thousand nine bonds with county facility sales tax. And um, by not doing that, if, if the taxes are not abated, then that goes back on the, the taxpayers on our debt service levy. And so when tax bills come out in, whenever they come out this year, um, July, August, September, um, then if it's not abated, then this amount, this four hundred eighty thousand or um, roughly would be included as additional debt to the taxpayers. Then uh, by abating this, if the board passes this resolution and abates this, the money will be transferred from the county facility sales tax fund to debt service and paid for without the obligation being, the taxpayers being responsible for this. So that is something that was discussed and when um, the county facility sales tax was passed back in two thousand sixteen.
Didn't we do a, a calculation last year to see what the actual savings was to the taxpayer and it was about like twelve dollars?
How many dollars?
Twelve.
I don't recall where.
I, I don't.
Shannon did it on a spreadsheet.
I was thinking it was more sixty, a hundred dollars or something along that line.
Yeah.
I thought it was, I thought it was fifty for two hundred thousand, twenty-five for a hundred thousand or something like that, I don't know.
Any other questions from the board?
We're in the whole uh, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-six, correct? We're deficit spending right now and we're, we've got a deficit of four hundred and twenty-nine, five eighty-six?
In, in what?
The ed fund.
In what aspect, Kara?
Well, uh, it says FY twenty-one budget. You've got us um, four hundred and twenty-nine under.
I don't know what page it is. It was in one of the.
It's the very first one.
Is it, okay, yeah.
Does this would go in the?
I'm wondering, I'm still, I'm not seeing that number.
It says at the very top, Murphysboro Community Unit one eighty-six, combining statement of receipts and disbursements, budget compared to actual for six months ending December thirty-first to two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty and nineteen. Cash basis unaudited.
Okay, which fund?
That's that one, I'm on a different one.
Oh, I'm just on, it's the same number.
Same number.
This one is the education fund and it just says for the whole budget. I mean, we're short four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
The debt can't be paid with this facility sales tax and that's what's transferring to the bond.
But it could be paid with property taxes.
Right.
But not on the, not on the, not on the bond levy. Levy for bonds and interest, it doesn't go to the ed fund.
Right, that, those are totally.
Well, a shell game anyway.
No, it doesn't go to that. That's a different.
Yeah, I know.
You levy with the ed fund, correct, is where you got the deficit and you can't take your bond and interest to pay in the ed fund deficit.
Right, right.
So you would raise the taxes on the bond and levy. But you, that's what the facility sales tax is for to pay that kind of debt, correct?
It's kind of the care's money. It can only go to certain areas, funds.
Any other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation.
So moved.
In a second.
I'll second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
No.
Mrs. Ivaldi?
No.
Dr. Door?
No.
Mr. Green? Or he's a, sorry. Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, it's a three-three, motion does not carry.
Um, need a, a motion to approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendar.
Item number four is the approval of the school calendar. You need, you need, I'm sorry.
It's.
You need two representatives from the board to work with you and.
Oh, for the, for the next.
And the MEA on that.
The twenty-one, twenty-two full year. Any two members from the MEA?
From the board.
Oh, from the board.
There's one or two.
Yeah, one or two. I think last time Annette and myself did it.
I usually do it, it doesn't matter.
All right. You good with one?
That's fine.
Just, can we step back to number three? Since the motion didn't pass, what happens? I guess that's the question for Jan.
He's gonna levy and it goes on the taxes.
Does that put us in a situation where ta, uh, we'll be up against the tax cap?
No, no Kevin, because um, it, it's not under, the, the bond and debt isn't under tax caps.
Okay.
It, it's excluded from our tax caps. So that won't affect that. That'll just be additional debt that just gets added to the tax rolls for um, so property taxes for each individual will be a little bit higher. And we'll have um, additional funds available in the county facility sales tax fund.
That, and that's all it can be used for, so they're just gonna sit there, right?
Correct. We can use it on um, building projects or those, you know, renovations, those type of things. But it can't be transferred to use for.
We can do new projects and pay for that, but this would have been to at least lower some taxes a little bit. We're not, and so we'll, we'll just generate some kind of new thing to build to use it for that instead of paying down some tax debt for our constituents, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Some of the smaller projects.
Okay, so item number four is taken care of. You've got your representative from the board.
Thank you, Ms. James.
Item number five is to the, set the class of twenty twenty-one graduation and baccalaureate dates and time.
Looking at May twenty-second, baccalaureate eleven AM and a seven PM graduation. Um, it will mirror the approach that was used last year, unless something really, really would change. You know, doing more of a drive-in model, correct, Mr. Almar? So.
So we had that much earlier last year, so, so that it was daylight still.
Yeah, I thought you guys wanted it earlier. I thought there was a thing about having it late at night.
Okay.
There's an issue, no?
Well, I mean, it has been. It was not with the drive-in because of limited amounts of participants in there.
So is that.
And we, we, we stayed later because of the coolness, I think, with, with the heat. Let me, let me make sure time is correct.
Right now, you're planning for a drive-in, is that correct?
Yes, unless, unless there's major changes to.
I see.
I don't see it.
I see.
I mean, right now.
I didn't know.
Fifty person limit still yet.
Yeah.
Wasn't it five o'clock last year, Cody?
I thought it was six, but.
I thought it was six.
Oh, I was saying it was five.
I thought they had to be there at five to line up.
They had to line up.
Graduation started at six. So eleven AM for baccalaureate and it will be a similar model. It'll be a, a drive-in with some um, virtual potential participation and then a six PM traditional or traditional.
You would just, you just wanna leave to be determined for the time?
To be determined. Set the date as May twenty-second and then we'll.
Are you good with that, Mr. Almar?
Yes.
So where is the baccalaureate held?
Well, right now, I think we're looking at two possi, it's usually held in, in the auditorium or in the caf. It was in the cafeteria with the new construction. We had it in the auditorium uh, the two years before last year. Um, it was, we did not have a baccalaureate last year because of COVID. Um, right now, we're looking at either a virtual baccalaureate, um, which Troy Brown has volunteered to, to help put that together as he did with, with Jessica, with the, the Christmas choir. Um, or we're looking at a drive-in baccalaureate as well, something similar to graduation last year.
So when I was looking at the stuff about donating um, materials to private religious entities, it, there's also a, a statement in here about school districts sponsoring baccalaureate ceremonies. And unless something's changed since this addition, under the US Supreme Court, Lee versus Weissman, a baccalaureate ceremony is unconstitutional if the school district or its agents sponsor, direct, or participate. As is the case in the analysis of school prayer questions, whether or not the ceremony is voluntary for the students is not relevant to its constitutionality. Under circumstances we're in, it may appear that the state is endorsing a privately organized baccalaureate ceremony. It may be necessary for school officials to affirmatively disclaim official endorsement. So.
You know, we, correct me if I'm wrong, but haven't we just always provided the facility? And somebody else handled it, is it that correct?
That's my understanding.
So it's not an endorsement, it's just, it was allowing them to use the facility.
Yeah.
Um, in the, in the past, Mr. Bode is our construction teacher. He has volunteered outside of being a district employee to help organize baccalaureate. He often um, invites pastors from the ministerial alliance and usually one pastor each year will volunteer to be there. Or, or I, I think I remember there was maybe two pastors there at the same time in the past as well.
I'd say it's not, it's nothing that we actually run.
It's nothing that we require. We don't require Mr. Bode to do that. Uh, he, he is, I think it's without doubt, he is Christian and he does uh, enjoy doing that. Um, it's voluntary, it's not.
Yeah, no, I get, I'm just saying it, that's what the, what the law book says, so maybe.
I, I just sent it to um, council to, just asked him, I said, you know, can, can a baccala, a district provide a venue for a baccalaureate? We're looking at potentially having a drive-in baccalaureate this year, you know. And, and I know the districts keep them very separate, like they're not, you know, put baccalaureate seamlessly tied into a graduation so that they're two separate choice-based events. So that, you know, it would be, I think, inappropriate to have it at five with a six o'clock graduation so that it would look like it was required. That, it makes it very optional when it's separate, but.
Yeah, it is, it is not required and I mean, usually we have anywhere from fifty to eighty students attend out of the one twenty to one fifty graduating.
And that's what I've seen in most other districts, about, about a third, thirty percent to forty percent of their class to participate in the baccalaureate and then the others will elect not to, so. Well, we will look at May twenty-second, uh, you know, as a date for both those. If it, it is deemed by the board's counsel to, to not have a baccalaureate on purposes, then I'll bring that back to the board or if Shane responds.
Okay.
Do we look for there to be any conflict for anybody being in any kind of a sport this year? Because that's something else that we run into with it being on a Saturday.
We're moving on sports.
Well, I mean, IHSA is coming out with back-to-sports guidelines right now and with, with IDPH. Uh, I, my answer to that would be, there's a good chance because I mean, sports are possibly running all the way into June twenty-sixth this year. I mean, we essentially, our spring sports are essentially going to be played in the summer this year if, if, if they're able to.
Which means there would, if, if it happens, and I think that's still a huge if, um, there's, you're never gonna find a Saturday or a Sunday.
Correct.
Or any day that's not gonna be used.
Yeah, and, and honestly, I, I don't know if they're, I doubt the IHSA will be having any state series.
Right.
So as we're scheduling games and whatnot, uh, I'm sure Mr. Navarro will pay close attention to not having just regular competitions on that Saturday the twenty-second.
Any other questions?
Although he may not have any choice if baseball, if that's when baseball starts.
I mean, he'll be able to meet with A.D.s and make sure that our date is not on the.
If he's gonna have any.
So potentially, I mean, the evening may be the better option so that if there's, you know, track, track.
I'm trying to track through the Facebook page to see what time graduation actually was and I'm having a hard time finding it. I can look.
Yeah, I thought they were lining up at five.
That's what I thought too.
Um.
We met, see, I was thinking we met at those parking lots like at four thirty or something.
Yeah, and then they, you know, there was like four different releases between five and six to get, they were there early.
Yeah.
I do remember that because we had to wait around for a little bit.
Cause they probably were trying to get their spot or was that, or were they assigned?
Well, they.
Oh, alphabetically.
Alphabetically, they had to have a different spot.
You were given, to his credit, they were given more time to get everybody lined up.
Yeah.
And it happened so seamlessly.
Here we go.
And we sat around for about ten minutes.
Right.
Because we had to wait because it was being streamed. So we sat around.
I have the documents ready. I'll know in just a second.
All right, so let's, can we go ahead and approve the recommendation because we gotta.
They were, they were meeting at five o'clock, so I'm sure it was.
Started, it starts at six.
At five thirty, you made two in, so yes, we started right about six o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah.
So looking at a graduation of six PM on May twenty-second and attended a baccalaureate time at four eleven AM that day, if we can act on that.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six is a review of the student fees.
Um, as you kind of alluded to, you know, this pandemic, we are making progress, but we're not, we're not going to turn the corner, the corner prior to next school year. My recommendation is to waive the, the student fees for one more year. I think that the likelihood of us having laboratories where they have shared tools and I just don't think that we're going to be at that point next year. So my recommendation would be that we, we waive one more year of student, student fees um, till we get back to just a more traditional approach where we. um, till we get back to just a more traditional approach where we, you know, have all of those things that most fees are created for, so. That would just be my recommendation.
Questions from the board? I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Bame?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries. Last item is the approval of the renewal of the audit proposal.
And sticking with our, the current firm, um, it, Ms. Bush, is it changing names? Is that correct?
Yes, they had a merger, um, so they were Emeline and Hoffman and now they're currently Rice Sullivan. Uh, but we'll have the same audit staff um, doing our field work and we've been very happy with the staff. They work well with our staff. Um, you know, do a good job getting reports back to us timely. And um, you know, the, the fee structure, um, I checked with a lot of area school districts to see based on their fund balances and their grants, what were they paying? And we're very comparable on the fee, the fees. So administration would recommend uh, the three-year audit proposal engagement letter um, through the twenty twenty-three school year.
Questions from the board? I'll entertain a motion to approve their recommendation.
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Bame?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries. We have a need to go into closed session.
Make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to section two of the Open Meeting Act five, all the comped statutes one twenty slash two C to review the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance of dismissal of specific employees of the district, including hearing testimony on complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity and filling a public office on the Board of Education.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Bame?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries. Take five?